I think we can get underway, so I will call the meeting to order for September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We have me and the boys, as I call it sometimes, in chambers, Councillor Broadhead, Councillor Killig, Councillor Mackay. Councillor Mamsky let us know that she's got an injury. I hope you're feeling better, Shelley, but she is joining us virtually. And the top of Sheena's head is joining us. Sheena, I hear you were a bit sick. Thank you for, you know, keeping the rest of us safe. She frozen? Oh, maybe. But I do see Councillor Hughes online. So, and Councillor Jolly sent a message that she may or may not attend. She did not explain why. So that's attendance. I need a motion to adopt the agenda. Councillor Mackay?
The September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four agenda be adopted as presented.
All right, I will call for the vote. Are we able to get Councillor Hughes's vote?
It looks like she's no longer in the meeting. I'm just gonna double check on that.
So Marta, I'm assuming if she can't vote, if she's frozen, she's.
She's not in the meeting, so she can't vote. So you can go ahead.
Okay. All right, hopefully she joins us back in. Okay, so, excuse me, agenda is adopted. Right, today, we always have a standing thing on our agenda called presentations, and today we have a very special few presentations. The Fire Service Exemplary Service Medal Award Presentation. We did this. All I can tell you, we did during playoffs. June twenty-fourth, and these three were at home watching the game instead of.
No.
No, but we couldn't, you couldn't attend that night, so we are happy to do it here in chambers. So I'm gonna turn it over to you, Chief, and you can take it from there. Do you have a mic? Excellent, go ahead.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mayor Heron, and good afternoon, Mayor Heron and members of council. It's a pleasure to be here with you today. As we recognize another three of our fire service members, two of whom today will be receiving their twelve-year Alberta Emergency Service Medal, while a third will be receiving their Service Medal, their twelve-year Service Medal, plus their twenty-two-year service bar. The Alberta Emergency Services Medal honors emergency services personnel who are involved in supporting emergency prevention, preparedness, and response throughout Alberta, and who have committed no less than twelve, twenty-two, thirty-two, or forty years of service. The Alberta Emergency Services Medal is a polished nickel disc circumscribed with the words Emergency Services Alberta around the Alberta Shield, while the inverse size of the side of the medal has the Alberta Wild Rose circumcised with the words in service of Albertans. And it's truly an honor to be recognized by the province in this deserving medal. Further to the medal, I should point out that the medal is affixed to a blue ribbon that has three white stripes. The blue color represents and symbolizes the province of Alberta, while the white stripes represent good service, loyalty, and conduct. And Mayor Heron, I would ask that you come and join me on the floor to make these presentations. Thank you. So first, I would like to introduce firefighter Ian Kim. Ian, if you'd come up and join Mayor Heron. Ian joined the St. Albert Fire Service in two thousand and eight and is receiving his twelve-year medal. He's a member of one platoon, he's an advanced care paramedic, and he's also an acting qualified officer with our fire service. In total, and although Ian is receiving his twelve-year service medal, I was very pleased to learn that he actually had twenty-seven years of service in the industry, which is a opportunity we'll take this coming spring when we catch up and make sure you get the appropriate medals that you deserve, sir. So it is my, my privilege and honor to announce Ian Kim and congratulate you on your twelve-year service medal, and congratulations, Ian. I should point out that with, with the, with the medal, there's also a certificate from Mayor and Council signed by councillor or Mayor Heron congratulating each member. And in a moment, when Andrew Martin joins us, he will also be receiving his officer qualified certificate, which was an achievement he reached throughout the past year. So having announced Andrew Martin, I would, I would ask that Andrew come forward and join Mayor Heron front and center. Andrew today is receiving his twelve-year service medal. He has a total of seventeen years' service in the fire industry. Andrew has served as a training officer within our training department, and very recently, just at the beginning of September, he took on the position of mental health coordinator, where he assists our peer support groups as well as our reintegration groups with their efforts to improve and focus on the mental health and wellbeing of our staff. As mentioned, the second certificate for Andrew today is his officer qualified certificate. Congratulations, Andrew, on your, on your twelve-year Alberta Emergency Service Medal. And finally, certainly not last but least, or certainly not anyways, is firefighter Miles Highland. Miles, if you would join us. Miles today is receiving not only his twelve-year service medal, but also his twenty-two-year service bar. The service bar is a bronze bar that's actually affixed to the Alberta Service Medal, representing twenty-two years of exemplary service within the province of Alberta. Miles is a member of the one platoon. He is obviously a firefighter with our service and an advanced care paramedic. And I'm very proud to say that Miles also has a total of twenty-seven years in the emergency services field, where, where much of this came to us, or twelve years prior to joining us, came from Edmonton Fire Rescue. Edmonton EMS, I apologize for that, but you made the right choice. I'll just point that out. It's fantastic. Miles, congratulations on not only your twelve-year Alberta Emergency Service Medal, but your twenty-two-year service bar as well. Congratulations. Excellent. And just in closing, I would like to thank Mayor and Council for your time this afternoon in recognizing these three members, and of course, once again, say congratulations to Ian, Andrew, and Miles on their achievement. Thank you.
I haven't had a good look at that yet.
I think it's, I think it's the material you're working with.
All right, that adds to our council meeting. That was awesome. So I assume there's no business arising from those presentations? We will move on. Consent agenda. Councillor Mackay pulled off eight point one. But other than that, I did not hear of any other removals from consent, so can I have somebody make a motion? Go ahead, Councillor Killig.
That the recommendations and the following agenda reports be approved. Six dot one, regular council meeting minutes of September third, two thousand and twenty-four. Nine dot one, public tax sale. Nine dot two, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five council advocacy priorities. Nine dot three, Sturgeon River Watershed Alliance Alberta Community Partnership Grant Support. And ten dot one, bylaw twenty-one slash twenty twenty-four, emergency management bylaw amendments.
Thank you. I'll call for the vote on that. Councillor Hughes is still not with us?
She just joined the meeting.
Oh, okay. Councillor Hughes, are you with us? Can't see her. Can't see me either. Turn my camera.
See, I see you now. Sorry, my whole computer shut down suddenly. Very stressful. So, but yes, thank you for your patience.
Okay, we just approved the consent agenda. So we're moving on to Order of Business, the seven point one, the two thousand and twenty-three St. Albert Policing Committee Annual Report. And I have Ian Sanderson down as chair to present it to us. Thanks for joining us. It's a good day to come with the fire medals here.
Throughout the year, I would also like to acknowledge the presence of committee members Crimson Sumners and Paul Speck in the gallery today. You've received the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four report from the Policing Committee. I'd like to take a few minutes of your time to cover some key points or areas from the report. At the end of two thousand and twenty-three, two members of our committee completed their terms. We certainly want to acknowledge and thank Todd Walsh and Jim Razzle for their contributions and effort during their terms. In two thousand and twenty-four, we welcome community members Monica Shuttleworth and Bill Turnham. And as council is aware, recruitment for the two thousand and twenty-five committees is about to begin. The committee completed a strategic planning exercise in two thousand and twenty-three and has adopted that plan as the two thousand and twenty-four to twenty-seven strategic plan to guide our activities and support the long-term policing priorities of our community. We recognize that there are no quick fixes to large social issues that affect the safety and security of our community. These issues cannot be addressed in isolation, and collaboration is key to success. This is a living document to ensure it remains current and aware of changing trends and issues. But whether there are changes in the committee itself, police leadership, the long-term goals of our community stay in focus. The policing priorities of crime reduction, mental health in vulnerable communities, and domestic or relationship violence and assault are broad in scope. But speak to the major issues that impact our residents and community as a whole. This is, this is much that, there is much that the committee can do through oversight, community engagement, and collaboration to support these priorities, and we are committed to that. The pandemic had a profound effect and significant impact on our community, so too for the Policing Committee. Our community engagement activities ground to a halt, and we realize that we must return and grow our community engagement activities over the coming years. Over the past year, we have certainly heard from the community that the community has lost awareness of the committee and our activities, but do support the idea of civilian oversight and governance of policing in our community. The strategic plan calls for significant activity in community engagement and collaboration with other community groups. As the current members of council are aware, the staffing levels at St. Albert detachment became a major concern as we came out of the pandemic. Although this was not an issue unique to St. Albert, the committee was concerned and suggested a local strategy to address concerns over service delivery and the impact shortages we're having on the delivery of service and the staff of the detachment. Council's actions on this suggestion certainly played a part in turning the situation around. A year later, the establishment numbers at the detachment are significantly improved, and we are certainly less concerned about the impacts to service delivery. As one of the well-established and leading policing committees in Alberta, the St. Albert Policing Committee is regularly consulted by the Ministry of Public Safety and Emergency Services. Over the past year, St. Albert was consulted as the ministry worked to establish a costing model for the establishment of new policing committees in the province. This was in advance of the development of the regulations of the Police Amendment Act. Just this week, we became aware that the ministry will be conducting consultations with policing committees in the province regarding the new Police Review Commission that will start as the provincial agency to investigate complaints against the police in December of two thousand and twenty-five. The tentative date for that consultation is October the twenty-first, and that information will be forwarded through administration reps and council members on the committee when it is received. As mentioned in the report, the St. Albert Policing Committee also drafted a resolution for the Alberta Association of Police Governance AGM in May two thousand and twenty-four, asking the Minister of Public Safety and Emergency Services to keep public complaints directors for commissions and committees in the province. We became aware of this as a part of the consultation with respect to the regulations that were being developed. This resolution was co-sponsored by the Camrose Police Commission and passed unanimously at the APG AGM in May. Just this week, we received a response from the minister on this and other resolutions, and I will forward that again to our council and administrative reps on the committee. The report also provides a report on the two thousand and twenty-three expenditures for the committee. Expenditures were certainly down, certainly because of the lack of community engagement activities and in-service training for committee members. Following the pandemic, I can advise council that our current budget for two thousand and twenty-four is approximately fifty-four percent expended. In closing, I would like to pass along to council the discussion that the committee had at our meeting last week regarding recent tragic and shocking events in our community, violence and youth at risk in the community. There is little doubt that these events will cause a rise in our crime severity index for this year. We have started to look at some evidence-based initiatives, but there's certainly a conversation that needs to be had at many levels as we continue to work to keep our community safe and secure. Thank you.
Thank you so much, not just for today's presentation, but also stepping up as chair and serving on the committee. It's, it's important work. Shockingly, Councillor Mackay has a question.
I thought you were gonna jump in.
No, go ahead.
No. Thank you very much for your report, and thank you for all of the police committee members that are in attendance. Two questions. I'll, I'll probably, I'm gonna get to your last comment, but I'm gonna ask you one based on a lot of the consultation that we've been invited in, you and your role as chair of the Alberta Association of Police Governance with the Ministry of Public Safety Emergency Services. You know, they're looking at standing up an over police civilian oversight body that will be responsible for all police discipline, at least in the municipal forces. It's yet to be determined whether or not it will be RCMP included in that unless you have some additional information that I'm not aware of. But one of the things that I guess when you said that they're gonna consult us in that role was is they could, they, they had a what we heard report as well in relation to earlier police amendment acts, and then they didn't release the results of that. Any, any, any concerns in relation to, I mean, the fact, the biggest piece there is is concern around us being, us losing the police complaints director and the vital role that that has within our community, maybe a little bit more on that.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great question. I think the, the concern over the fact that there was not a what we heard report was felt across the province. Just yesterday, in, in pre-meeting with respect to the consultations on the Police Review Commission, again spoke to that, to the ministry representatives, and it appears that that is a result of a decision of high levels within the ministry that they don't see the value in releasing those reports. We have issue with that and suggested that perhaps that led to transparency in that, but we'll see where that line lands. I don't know that there would be a what we heard report coming out of the consultation on the Police Review Commission, so I think it's really important that everybody has a chance to say and hear what's going on with respect to that. With respect to the RCMP taking part in that, certainly K Division has indicated their willingness and their desire to be a part of that. And even yesterday, we heard nothing to suggest that that has changed. It's just a matter of several levels, government getting together and agreeing on it. But I think by the December two thousand and twenty-five, we would certainly see that very likely the RCMP and K Division will, will participate in the Police Review Commission process for sure.
Yeah, thanks. Good answer. I mean, in the sense that we don't know why, we don't know what we don't know, I guess. In relation to your closing comment there, I mean, and certainly you know, the rise in some of the serious crime will definitely have an impact on our reporting and our crime severity index. But more importantly, I guess it's the impact that it has on the community itself. And I know we've discussed some of the initiatives that the RCMP are maybe looking at engaging in. Do they tie into our strategic priorities as it relates to our next kind of our strategic plan? Or is there additional initiatives that you can let city council know on? And I realize we're just an old advisory body, and some of the action items are yet to be determined based on resources and the like.
I, I think the initiatives the detachment has going on certainly are a part of that. But I think it's much broader than that, and we certainly, as a committee, discussed, you know, the impact in our schools and that. A lot of children at risk are not at an age where they would become firmly involved with the police, and so as a community strategy, I think the broader conversation has to be held at, at several levels with many different partners to sort of look at what's available and sort of addressing at-risk youth, which there seems to be that, that trend of increasing violence and youngsters as well.
So we don't know specifically what some of the primary causes are, or is it just, is, can we, I mean, I'm not, I don't even know if I know what all the causes are because they're complex, but I mean, I, do you know, have any additional information in your discussions with the attachment?
I, I think, you know, you have to look at children at risk and what puts them at risk, and those can be multifarious reasons. The bottom line is they become at risk to becoming involved in either violent behaviors or acting out or causing issues that, that threaten security and safety of themselves and others. And so I think it's a, again, a much broader conversation that we have to have. It's not one thing that's gonna fix it. I think it's many things, and I think everybody at the table is probably something that's really, really important here to make sure that we're working together on it rather than individually in silence.
Anyways, thanks. I'll give up the floor to Wes.
All right, we'll jump over to you, Councillor Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for your service and, and your report today, and thank you to Crimson and Paul for showing up today. Appreciate that as well. Mike, I, I hope I'm not covering the same material that Councillor Mackay is, but in your role as the chair of the Governance Committee, the Alberta Association of Police Governance, is there, like, what's happening in St. Albert that we're all concerned about of late? Would you characterize this as out of character of what's happening province-wide in, in terms of what you're hearing?
No, I wouldn't. I, I think it is a, a large issue across the province. Everybody's seeing manifestations at all kinds of different levels and in different ways, but I think it's something that the community has to get their hands on and, and look at. The, I, I, I think overall, St. Albert is a, remains a safe community, but we can't ride on that. We, we need to make sure that we're doing things that address the issues that, that could seriously impact that, and you know, people are going to get concerned when they see a rise in the serious crime index. And so I think, you know, to making sure that we're on point, then yes, we understand this issue, we understand what it is, but also we're looking at the broader issues, and these are not quick fixes, but community-based, but to your point, I think it is something everybody's seen across the province in one way or another. But again, local solutions seem to be the best.
All right. Well, I appreciate that perspective. We'd hate to be alone in having to deal with this, but I, it's a sad commentary that things are rising or whatever, but I appreciate your service and, yeah, thank you.
Councillor Hughes or Councillor Mamsky, any questions? All right, seeing none. Most of my questions were actually answered. Except for is there anything planned for the outgoing Commander Ryan Komyak in the way of celebrations or?
TBD.
TBD, okay.
Just heard about it last week, and we're, you know, we've, we've already spoken with the detachment about being involved and we'll, we'll do something, but he's starting officially in a rather short period of time, and I don't think we could do it justice in the short term, but we're certainly having some conversations about that, about what we could do, and we'll keep you posted on that.
And we, my office is sending a letter to K Division expressing a desire, I guess, to be part of that selection process. When we chose Ryan, it was myself and the Chair of the Policing Committee, Chris Wells, at the time. So if you're up for the job, you and I can maybe sit in on the last two or three interviews and help.
Be glad to.
Okay, perfect. Oh, Ken, go ahead.
I think you just kind of knocked off my question in your last comment in the sense that the only thing I would maybe encourage is, is that now that our detachment has reached an authorized strength of seventy-five and we're one of the largest detachments, I would like to have a discussion and maybe with the policing committee involvement around, do we want a promotion or do we want a lateral? And I think that's an important discussion because of the value of bringing in a seasoned detachment commander or somebody with a detachment commander experience, even if it's a little slightly smaller. I think there are complexities of coming in as a new promotion into that role.
After never done it.
And if you've, yeah, and if you've never done it before, so maybe perhaps I can suggest in your letter that we look at alternatives rather than just having a promotion.
We, I don't know, is it, I haven't seen it yet.
It's sitting with your staff, so we could play with the language to, to include that if you wish, or part of a discussion, certainly.
All right, Ken, while you have the mic, do you wanna make the motion?
It's just for information. It's just for information, so there is no more.
That's right. Okay, thank you, Ian, for joining us. It was nice to see you.
I jumped before Marta did. I could see.
She was ready. Old habits, right?
I just want to again thank the policing committee and all of the work that you guys do.
Super proud of it now.
Yeah.
Okay, Ken, you pulled eight point one off, which is the two thousand and twenty-four AB meetings convention briefing. Did you have a question about one of the resolutions or, go ahead?
Yeah, in particular, it relates to the resolution that we're going to put forward on provincial support of watershed management. I see Mr. Killow here, so I'm not sure if there's a, a presentation or anything in relation to this one. My concerns relates to the information that was in the background or report around the potential of a friendly. And I wanted to get a feel of.
So which, which motion are we talking about?
About the provincial support for watershed motion.
Watershed, okay, so that is.
B eighteen.
B eighteen, thank you.
So as to the actual report in our agenda, I don't. So as to the actual report in our agenda, I don't have it here. But anyways, the concern is around the proposed mechanisms. That would be on the floor of of the resolutions in Alberta munis as to whether or not. We would be willing to take a friendly, and I don't want to take a friendly based on the, it's in the background or information on page thirty of our agenda package. And maybe I'll turn it over to administration to explain a little bit more.
Yeah, thank you, councillor, and certainly Mr. Kilo can provide the the guts of it. Just for everybody, it was a proposal for a friendly amendment from the City of Red Deer. Essentially to take it from incorporation of a focus on on small watershed management to a more holistic look at at watersheds holistically. So Mr. Kilo is here, we also have representatives from environment, if there are any questions specific. You know, to to the 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 motion itself on why we would have proposed small watersheds vice more holistically. So Mr. Kilo, we.
To the Chair. We do not support, while administration does not support the request for amendment. As the original intent of the resolution is to address a lack provincial support. That's specific to smaller municipalities within smaller watersheds. Such as the city St Albert and other municipalities within the Sturgeon River watershed. The flip side, though, is if we were to accept this as a friendly amendment and broaden the scope to all municipalities and all watersheds. The resolution could gain more support when it's debated at the floor. However, in any case, if council does not support this as a friendly amendment. The City of Red Deer could still request the amendment on the floor during the resolution session. And if delegates support the amendment, then the resolution will change. So before you is an option to have an emergent council resolution to support it as a friendly amendment. However, our our administrative recommendation is to just proceed as is and have it debated on the floor at convention.
I mean, I'm I'm not in favor of it in a in a consultation meeting that I had with administration yesterday along with councillor Broadhead. I think the intent of the motion was that. Small prairie fed that are precipitation fed rivers like the Sturgeon and the Battle and some of the other smaller ones. Would be over, would we would lose that if we started to throw in the entire. North Saskatchewan, the South Saskatchewan, potentially other major waterways. And I I I I sense maybe that we would probably gain a a more support. But I think we can also explain that why we are trying to put forward this amendment or put for this. Resolution based on the fact that it's impacts our watersheds and other smaller watersheds in its totality. And and therefore would impact the larger ones. But right now, I think we're seen as being. We're kind of out of sight, out of mind, and and maybe there are some kind of ancillary impacts of dealing with the entire watershed. But at the same time, I think we'd still be overshadowed if we started looking at a broader. Amendment. So I don't, I mean, I'm I'm on, you know, I mean, I I don't think I support the friendly and I'm willing to go forward. And and have that discussion on the floor in Red Deer.
Okay, and so if we wanted to accept the friendly, you had a motion ready for us, but. You're not inclined, administration's not recommending it.
I just wanted to make sure, I I pulled it just so we'd have that.
No, that's a good idea.
So if being as there's. I don't see anybody putting.
I'm just wondering if councillor Mansky has any further thoughts as she sits on the watershed.
The only consideration I had is there's, you know, there's much smaller communities than us that, you know, need funding as well. So everyone's in the equal position and all the work that's being done is very much collaborative. Because I mean, there's lots of communities that fall within all the watersheds and then there's agricultural. And I think there's a strong focus amongst all communities working hard to. Define the best success anyhow, so I don't feel that we're excluded by any means. So I I go either way, you know, I mean, it's how I'm happy to have the focus on our community. But I don't think that we would lose anything supporting all communities as well.
Who is our second or on that one?
County Gibbons.
Right, that makes sense.
And and if council did vote to accept the friendly, obviously, we'd have to go back as well for a second or that materially changes the.
Yeah, sorry, if.
We'd have to go back and talk to Gibbons and see if they were willing to do the same at the end of the day. In order for it to be the resolution materially changes, we have to go through the process again, which is is fine, that could be navigated.
Can happen on the floor.
Madam Mayor, I guess if it's on the floor, it's the best vote. Everyone has their say then, so yeah, it's probably the best solution.
So you're good, feeling comfortable because you're the sponsor for that one.
Yeah, no, I'm okay. I'm I'm okay, and I I take your point, councillor Bermansky, but I still think. That, I mean, I I know from being involved in the past that there's a lot of collaboration and. And that's kind of my intent in the saying that this will still probably achieve what we all want to achieve. But I would much prefer us having a having a having a. Stay as we propose and then having that discussion with the floor. Maybe Red Deer will bring forward something that I agree with. I don't know, or that we agree with.
Well, and we'll all protect the water together, so it's it's good.
All right. I'm just wondering if we're done on that one. We're good? Watershed's good? Okay, go ahead. And then do you have a question about different resolution? Okay, go ahead, councillor Broadhead.
I, yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I certainly support councillor Mackay's position on this. My understanding is that the major watersheds in the in the province get significant. Focus, if you will, from the provincial government. This motion is intended to raise the profile of the smaller. Watersheds such as the Sturgeon River watershed. So my hope is is that this stays on the smaller watersheds. Because as we discussed yesterday, if you if you include everything in the in the province, then. The focus on the watershed just gets diluted, the smaller ones anyway. So I'm I'm I too am with councillor Mackay and not accepting the friendly.
All right, councillor Killick.
I I would echo those comments and previous through environmental committee and working with North Saskatchewan and. Sturgeon watersheds and some of the smaller communities around the area. They're they were feeling that their focus was always on the big provincial. Watershed areas. And I think by keeping this focused as it originally started out. Keeping it focused on the smaller areas, North Saskatchewan and and Sturgeon. I hate to say this, but we don't water it down. And literally, I think we need to keep that focus there. Now, that was the original intent and I think has been, as I said previously, working on that committee. They they felt that they were losing focus and and. And funding for some of their initiatives because it was always going at a provincial level towards the larger watershed. So I I like keeping this as it is and we'll see where it goes at. As if their if their resolution sticks or whether there's other amendments, but I like the way it is right now.
All right, I see no more hands up, no more questions on on the other resolutions, and this was just for information. All right, just so you all know, I will be heading down to the convention on Tuesday. And at three till five, there is a meeting of the midsize cities to talk about the resolutions and figure out which ones are really focused on midsize issues. And make sure we all are aligned and supporting and haven't got there yet, but we've got a briefing from. Canadian Strategies Group on how they align with our midsize strategic plan, which was a good work. Did you see that, Monty? Yeah, you were on that meeting, yeah. Okay, next on our agenda was public tax sale on consent. The motion read that the city assessor be delegated the responsibility under section. Four one nine eight of the municipal government act to set a reserve bid for each parcel of land on the tax arrears list. That is to be offered for sale at the October twenty third, two thousand and twenty four public tax sale. With the condition that the city assessor set the reserve bid as close as reasonably possible to the market value of each property. And number two, that the terms and conditions of sale provided as as an attachment to the September seventeen, two thousand and twenty four agenda report entitled. Two thousand and twenty four public tax sale be approved. So that was on consent. Nine point two was also on consent, page one thirty three of your package. If this was our advocacy priorities, so the motion that passed was that council, that the council two thousand and twenty of our twenty five advocacy priorities. Entitled Council Advocacy Priorities two thousand and twenty four to twenty five, provided as the attachment one to the agenda report in the same name be approved. Nine point three was on consent, which was more watershed stuff. The motion that passed read that reads as follows. That council support the Sturgeon River Watershed Alliance grant application to the government of Alberta's Alberta Community Partnership Program. And that the mayor be authorized to draft a letter in support of the Sturgeon River Watershed Alliance's grant application to the government of Alberta. So Community Partnership Program. And then this one was not on consent, nine point four. I have listed Christina Peter speaking to it. Christine, are you with us?
I am.
Awesome. So this is the addition to the ten year capital growth plan, the Badger Land site. Go ahead.
So I don't really have too much of a presentation, to be honest. It is basically just asking that we add this for consideration when you're looking at your budget. So that's what we're just asking that it it gets put on to the capital plan.
Could have had this on consent, I guess, but.
We could have, this is this is administrative in nature in the sense that inclusion on the capital plan allows us to come forward and make a formal budget ask as we look at.
It just kicks off the process, right? Yeah, we should have put on consent. Sorry, Christina.
Yeah, no worries.
So anyone have any questions about Badgerland? Go ahead.
Just administration in relation to the, so is all the other work done in relation to identifying? The uses or the availability of uses in in relation to some of the salt contamination or other contaminations onsite?
So we do have a pretty good understanding of what would be the best types of uses for those lands. That would be part of this site plan is to just make sure that. Some of the the uses that would be more impacted by the contamination are located away from that and not impacted.
So most of the pre-work has already been done. I know that we, there was a lot of motions in relation to Badgerland and. And and particularly around the remediation efforts, but so that all has been completed then.
So that will that will have all been completed by the time this happens. We're in the process of just finalizing that through the neighborhood plan process. And we expect that to be done at the end of December of this year.
So final question, because I'm thinking as I'm talking here. So the portion that is going to be on the other side of Leclerc, is it Leclerc or LaFowler? Sorry, Fowler, is that also included in this whole ident, this whole process then?
Yes, it is. It's looking at the whole Badger site.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Seeing none, this one does have an associated motion. Ken, you want to read it?
That administration update the twenty twenty five, twenty thirty four municipal growth capital plan. To include the capital project charter provided in the attachment titled Badger Land Site Plan. And number two, that the revised twenty twenty five, twenty thirty four municipal capital plan be included in the proposed. Twenty twenty five, twenty twenty seven business plan and budget along with funding recommendations guided by the capital prioritization matrix.
All right, call for the vote. Unless you have any comments.
No comments. I think they're in my question and in some of the responses as to why we need to.
Voting's closed. That passes unanimously. Oh, we had a bylaw that was approved on consent, which was amendments to our emergency management bylaw, which was by law twenty one, two thousand and twenty four. I'm not going to read the back, because we did three readings, it's changed. Okay, no emergent items today, but we do have our favorite day of the month, civic and external agency updates. Why don't I start with the ladies online? Councillor Bermansky, do you have your update ready?
I do, yes, thank you, Mayor. So the Arts Development Advisory Committee met early because our normal meeting would have been when the Alberta Municipalities Convention is going on next week. So we got business out of the way and it was quite an interesting meeting. We focused on what the arts committee is doing with the the budget, the. The reserve funding that is still, you know, quite a substantial amount. And focusing on smaller projects with more art in the city rather than, you know, spending as much money on, say, the. Children's events, projects or whatever. So they have a they have a plan, a less costly plan for the children's fest this year. And I'll hold that one on as a surprise because they're they're actually still talking to the person that will be designing that. What will be coming forward to council is is a motion to pull from the reserve for the replacement of St Albert statue. And so it was the original artist that will be will be recreating that. The addition, the original mold was was no longer in existence. So though the intent is a smaller, a smaller statue. And because it focuses on on, you know, continued learning, it will be placed inside St Albert place. In front of the library, so it'll be in a safer location and with a true meaning spot for it. We also had some art that the art that was taken down. Let's see here, DX it, says accession of healthy communities, and that was a piece of art that was removed from the building. Earlier in the year and it was essentially crumbling, so we saw it was, it lasted just over twenty years. Which they thought was a good amount of time and the the artists used a specific type of paint that did give it that. Length of time when it's in the outdoors and sun and so on, but that that was approved by the artist to destroy that one. It is beyond repair. So that was another interesting thing that came forward. We'll be selecting the committee to judge for the the banner project. That's coming up for downtown and the intent of that is to be present to be installed next spring. So that will be early after Christmas stuff comes down. We're talking about mosaics and Lions Park Visual Arts Studios, all kinds of things going on. So it's a really long meeting. I can go on and on, but a lot of it will be updated in the newspaper. It's exciting that we'll have all this beautiful stuff going on all over the place and we're really cognizant of doing it at the best cost to the to the public. So that's exciting.
That's.
To me anyhow.
The busy, it's a busy committee, and I noticed, I think you put arts committee down as your first choice for next year.
You did, yes, I love that.
Councillor Hughes.
It's hard to imagine we actually didn't have this committee a few years ago, Mayor.
Yeah, I know.
Such a busy committee. Yeah, so a couple of things. So the audit committee, so I'm going to beat out Wes and and because I'm here and and Ken. So the audit committee met, we've completed the cybersecurity audit. I can say that it was, it was really great that we did it. It's certainly giving us a framework to move forward and. Confidence in where we are right now. So I'm really glad we did it. And the next strategy, the next audits moving forward as well with the R P relating to human resources. And this has all been predetermined about the order just based on general risk, not necessarily in vulnerability or weakness of the community of the organization. Simply just from a risk perspective, how to manage and ensure that our strategies are currently in line. So it's not, any of these audits are not specifically because we think there's a problem, but rather just because we want to make sure that all of our framework is intact. And then if there are any issues we have to address, there's a strict way to handle it. So while we are doing the next one is human resources and they are also very cooperative and looking forward to getting the results. It's not indication there's a problem in human resources, just like there was not really a problem in cybersecurity, it was to give us a checkup on it. So and that will be moving forward to do in the twenty twenty five. And will be also expected to be completed in twenty twenty five. And the waste minimization is meeting next month. We're having a huge meeting in Red Deer for a whole day with the South counterparts as well about waste minimization. So that'll be the first that I've experienced, so we'll see what comes of that. And seniors is meeting, the schedule to meet again next month, that's what they decided in spring. We have not given them a second item to like on the the parameters. There was, we're supposed to have council asking for their opinion about two things a year, and we have not assigned a second thing, so just a heads up. That if anybody comes to attention that there's an opportunity to do that. That if anybody um, comes to attention that there's an opportunity to do that, um, they're certainly willing to do it and they are applying to meet next month. And that's it. Thanks.
Awesome. All right, we'll start with you, Counselor Brotta. Are you ready?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, so last week uh. We met the internal audit committee. I won't uh, uh. Say anything further. I think Counselor Hughes as chair covered the uh, content to the material. And uh, and then I um, I sat on the executive meeting of QDA. Uh, council supports me to uh, sit on this committee, national committee, and so I'll report. Uh, strategic plan of the association was number one on the list. Number two was uh, uh. Advocacy around the permanent public transit fund uh, that's uh. Um, contemplated by the uh, current uh, federal government and how that plays out, certainly and how we would advocate. As an association to uh, to ensure that all um, municipalities across the nation get their fair share of. Uh, funding for public transit. Yeah, and then of course, the the continued discussion around zero emission vehicles, how that plays out, particularly in light of uh. The problem with with batteries these days. So in any case, uh, uh, those are the uh, those are the things. I appreciate being able to represent uh, municipal councils across the nation and uh. I trust that I uh, speak loudly for their voice. Um, the uh, uh. Edmonton Metropolitan Region uh, Audit and Finance Committee meets October the third and I'll report on that next month.
I noticed you put audit as your first choice, I think.
Want to finish out the term, Madam Mayor? I, it's, it's an interesting one and quite honestly, we'll be dealing with. The the larger issue of of how do we um, continue to fund the organization? Uh, when the accumulated surplus is is expended and the provincial government is.
Not funding.
Not willing to up the ante, October the third.
Okay, uh, moving over to the left, the left wingers, Counselor Kilik.
Thank you, Madam.
Far left.
Far left, yeah. Um. Update on Edmonton Salutes. I had the opportunity to attend the uh, Execut Trek in Wayne Wright. On August twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, I was only able to attend the uh, on the second day on the twenty-fifth. Which meant I had to drive down to Wayne Wright at three in the morning um, and spend a day with our uh, reservist. Uh, troops while they were doing their training, getting um, ready for uh, deployment around Canada. And uh, and internationally.
You should have shared the pictures.
Oh, I should have shared the pictures. Uh, it was an excellent opportunity to see the value of our. Troops as well as our reserve troops and how they uh, can be of benefit to uh, to businesses. To support the reserve uh, movement and we're very pleased to say that Saint Albert does that. I believe we have one firefighter that is a reserve troop uh, or a reservist and I believe will. Be going on deployment uh, fairly quickly here. Uh, Mr. Fletcher, is that?
I, I don't know about deployment. Certainly did some training, I believe, last.
He's in train. Uh, ex- excellent opportunity and I certainly observed um, how or. A reservist can come together uh, as a quick team, do team building, storming and norming. Uh, get to work together with individuals that they may have not worked with before. Uh, apply business skills, um, planning, um, uh, practice, planning, testing. Et cetera, all skills that would be very, very valuable to business. And I'm very pleased to say that on October ninth, at the Chamber of Commerce luncheon at the Sturgeon Golf Course. We're going to have a couple of members of the um, Reserve uh. Board come out and talk and present uh, to the chamber luncheon. Uh, they'll do a much better job of explaining the reserve. Uh, role that I have just done here, but uh, it it's just really excellent that they will be able to attend on, on October ninth and and speak. Um, to all members of of the business community. Our next meeting on Edmonton Salutes is September twenty-seventh. Um, the CSAC had no meetings uh. Over the summer, obviously, our, our meeting is yet to be scheduled for the end of the month. Uh, but we. Uh, did have a pretty significant event on the weekend where the CSCC had given a capital grant of sixty thousand dollars. To the Botanic Park to help um, build their, their new workshop and garage. So they were able to get rid of the old rusty leaky C can and uh, replace it with a permanent facility. Uh, City of Saint Albert provided a grant of sixty thousand dollars to complete that. Uh, it's a great facility. Um, so uh, Mayor and myself were there to uh, cut, do the ribbon cutting. Uh, which was uh, which was just great. And uh, the Saint Albert Park, Botanic Park was very, very grateful. Not only for the money, uh, because that actually is kind of the easy thing, but they were very uh, grateful for all of the support. That Anna Royer and her uh, couple of team members gave uh, to making that uh, facility happen with permitting. Um, getting clearances uh, with the city for utilities, connections. Um, getting the old C can out of there as well. So uh, as I said, the money is kind of the easy part. But the, the work that it took over six, eight months of planning with the city to make that happen again, very, very much appreciated.
Awesome. And finally, Counselor McCray.
Yeah, I've been quite busy. Uh, I'll start with uh, the Edmonton Metro Region Board, the Metropolitan Region Servicing Plan. MRSP Committee that I sit on represent Saint Albert. Um, basically, we met on uh, last Friday, September sixth. And um, really the main discussion on the uh, agenda was how to, uh, deferring the five-year review. Of the committee to coincide with the twenty twenty-seven growth plan update that you're involved with, Madam Mayor. Um, so I mean, basically it looks like, well, um, I think committee recommended, we'll recommend back to EMRB board. That um, we defer the review and and. Align it with the twenty twenty-seven growth plan. Um, there was other in relation to um. Um, some of the other work that's still going on is uh, on the collaborative around stormwater and solid waste. Uh, we looked at uh, some of the um, reports as to where we are on that and um. And how do, a lot of the discussion that we had was is how do we uh, maintain the great work that the collaboratives are doing? And the relations of work that they have been approved to do. And um, it's believed that. That potentially moving that forward to the board, there'll be discussion and that there'll be support, hopefully support to maintain the collaboratives as it relates. To the approved work. Um, going on to uh, Aero Utilities, uh, we had our um, meeting last Friday. As it related to setting the. Uh, uh, budget in, um, so we arrived at uh, approved the. Two dollars and five cents in relation to what we will be bringing, uh, taking, what we've approved. And will be sending out to the municipalities uh, of interest there. That's about a month ahead of what we normally do in the. Yeah, and the effort of getting it out ahead so that the municipalities have a ample awareness that. Um, and can potentially put it into the, well, will put it into the budget documents for each municipality. Um, also, we formed a committee that has representatives of not only the CAOs, but then we also formed a separate committee that has. Um, representatives from the different municipalities, financial departments, and they have some, some um. Uh, discussion in relation to uh, how these numbers are arrived at and what there's early, it's around improving communication. So that there's a little bit more awareness. Um, just so another thing of note in relation to uh, our debt limit. For Aero Utilities, on August eighteenth, the province approved a temporary debt limit increase of two hundred and forty million dollars. And debt servicing.
So the new debt limit's two hundred and forty million?
Yeah. And uh, and basically debt servicing of forty-two million to the end of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. And uh, so that was uh, good news in relation to where we were around our borrowing. Um, council remember that we were able to secure a fifty million dollar grant from uh, the province. And we're working in relation to with treasury and finance around. Maybe front ending that in a different manner rather than ten, ten thirty. They're maybe perhaps willing to look at a different formula moving forward and we might get more of that money upfront. So um. Um, one thing of note, uh, on September fifth, the chief and council of Enoch Cree Nation unanimously approved. Entering into an MOU with Aero Utilities and uh, we ratified that unanimously at our last meeting. Um, what this does is this partnership sets a foundation to move Enoch closer to ensuring wastewater servicing is available to support their future growth. And as part of, part of this expression of agreement, uh, the goal is for Enoch to become both a customer and may possibly eventually the fourteenth member of. Arrow. Uh, this is significant and just because it enables Enoch to have the same economic opportunities neighboring. Neighboring communities has, and it really kind of speaks towards some of the recommendations that are in truth and reconciliation. And basically on that, um, we are going to uh, take part in a ceremonial signing on September thirtieth, which is truth and reconciliation. It's in the more morning. Um, so I, we are of course aware that many municipalities, many of our members will be tied up. In their own events and recognition of that important date. However, um, they will. Uh, we are going to be extending invitations to yourself.
What time in the morning?
Ten AM. Ours doesn't start, I believe, until one, I believe.
Noon.
Noon or it's, it goes till ten to one, but we'll be done this official signing.
Okay.
Uh, right now, um, we are looking at having quite a few members of. Um, both the federal and provincial government in attendance as well. So um, the other one, I guess. Just wrapping up in relation. To my committees was, we just heard about the policing committee and a great deal of the discussion that we had on the policing committee was. Succession planning for the Public Complaints Director's position, because I mean, that's a, an extra responsibility, extra trainings required, extra security clearances. Is required. And so we have to figure out how do we do succession planning and that involves how we select. Potentially future applicants in that process. So um, uh, because you can't have the public complaints director. Timing out in relation to uh, their commitment on the committee and 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 then. Having to potentially try and identify another, basically a volunteer.
Right.
Which creates, which creates a lot of um, challenge. And then you also heard the discussion was around. Uh, what's the government of Alberta really intending on doing with that position? We believe it to be extremely important because of the fact that a, uh, a few members of our society really don't want to. Take a complaint of service or conduct directly to the RCMP because they don't feel that they'll have a fair hearing in relation to. And and also they really just don't want to talk to a police officer about another police officer because they fear reprisal. So we've, we don't have a great number of complaints and we don't seem to, and we've worked uh, successfully. Um, mitigating that in with the involvement where appropriate with the RCMP or just in basically the involvement of the public complaints director. However, we still view it as being pretty fairly critical and we have to look at how do we determine the best way to move forward on that. I think that's everything.
Awesome. Counselor Bermansky, you got your hand up?
Yes, I was kind of ended uh, soon there. I actually have the Sturgeon Watershed update as well.
Go ahead.
Um, that was on uh, August twelfth, so we did meet and uh, the, the reason for that meeting was to get the letter of support. From council, which was voted on on consent today uh, for the work that they're doing uh, going forward. So in that meeting, uh, there was several communities who joined the meeting. There was someone from the province. We had uh. Lac Saint Anne, Onaway, Parkland County, Gibbons, Morneville, Sturgeon, um, all the surrounding communities. Uh, focusing on getting a letter of support for, from all the group to apply for the ACP grant from the province for that. For the projects that they're working on. Uh, the projects that they decided um, will be the focus is aquatic east ecosystems. Municipal Guide to Road, Road Salt Watershed Management Plan Implement, Implementation. And um, then they're talking about the cities working with, cities and towns working with the water cro. Watercourse crossing condition prioritization and remedy remediation using existing watershed wide assessment report. Uh, we focused on flow tools, stream tools, rehabilitations of crossings. So again, just to. Reiterate that there's so much work being done collaborative uh, in a collaboration between all the smaller communities. But on the outside, Noris, North Saskatchewan Watershed Alliance does work with our city. Our city contributes a lot of information. And the NSWA works as well and a lot of their funding comes from AppCor, so that shouldn't go uh, without mentioning. But again, there's a lot of focus on environment, which is good news and I was very happy that uh, council voted in favor of the letter of support. As well. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. All right, next on our agenda is information requests, notice and motions. And announcements. I know Counselor Brotta, you had a. Think, let me just see. Something about. Land use permit variance request. Do you have it? Okay.
From a resident business owner asking that his business be allowed to operate on the gravel road right away. A little used, uh, if used at all piece roadway just north of the Saint Albert Trail. Fowler Way intersection is businesses renting trailers and vehicles, but the moving market in the area would simply be used as a vehicle and trailer staging area. The business owner understands that city approval would be required with a subsequent fee. But feels that the variance uh, to a land use permanent allowing such an operation should not be out of the question. Despite discussions listing why such a variance would be unlikely, he would like an official response from the city. Indicating the rationale for denying such a request for land use variance for his business.
All right, um, uh, Counselor Kilik, did you have one?
Uh, yes, I do, Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Uh, information request uh, that the pedestrian islands on Saint Albert Trail and Saint Anna and Saint and Sturgeon Road were painted several years ago. The paint is looking very worn and unkempt. The plant, are there plans to clean this up, remove the remaining paint? Is this achievable in twenty twenty-four slash twenty twenty-five within existing budget with a separate project slash budget? Please advise how much be required for twenty twenty-five.
We did talk about that. Last term, I guess, and we, I, I could dig up somewhere as an IR. And it was expensive. So we were just going to let it naturally, but there'll be, if you want it done sooner, I'm sure they'll have it in an IR. I did not read up my one about the Hookah Lounge at Standing Committee, did I?
Uh, somebody read it in for you.
Oh, good, okay, perfect, okay. Uh, is there any more that I missed?
There's one more for Counselor Kilik related to graffiti and vandalism.
The what?
How much does the city spend annually on graffiti and vandalism related damage?
Oh vandalism, yeah.
They don't have that in front of me, unfortunately. Um, my, I changed it from a CI to an IR because it was so complex. I don't know if.
It's okay. If you give us a general idea, we'll get it into the record. Do you remember or did you?
Yes, the IR was just to request the amount of money that is spent um, in twenty twenty-four. For uh, fixing of vandalized bus shelters slash uh, removal of graffiti. So that we get a sense of what that uh, scope of that budget is from an operational perspective.
Okay, good one. Thanks. We're good? Okay, is there anything else that anyone wants to bring up today in the way of notices, motion? Information requests or announcements? All right, um. We are now going in camera. Sorry. We have two scheduled agenda items. One is our conversation with the C uh, AO. And then one with just council if we still see the need. So I need someone to make a motion. Thank you, Counselor Kilik. Go ahead. Thank you, Council Killick. Go ahead.
Uh, that council move in camera to have a confidential dialogue with the CAO pursuant to section twenty four dash one dash A of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that passes unanimously. All right, we'll see you in council lounge.